Good evening, it is 5:01. Welcome to our April 15 Finance Committee meeting. We will begin with introductions over here on my left.
Jeff Henley.
Joanne O'Brien.
Molly Rogers.
Becky Fless.
Toni Vee.
Administrative staff.
Pat Hamilton Superintendent.
Andrea Dish Business Manager.
Darren McGuire Director of Technology.
Josh Farr adult ed director.
Excellent. This evening, we're going to be discussing the adult ed budget. So I will turn that over.
Yeah, start with Andrea.
Sure. So I have given everyone packets for our adult ed budget and it's going to go through. And I apologize for not having staples. I wasn't paying much attention. So the first document you have is five page document. It's a summary expenditure. If you take a peek, you will notice the lines are numbered. So if you look at line one, you will see that the account number starts with 1500. The state requires that we break adult ed into two funds. Fund 1500 is where you can see all of these account numbers starting. It's basically where the instructional part of adult ed lives. It includes the office of the director as well as the high set and or high school completion, as well as some other programs that they typically run in adult ed. If you look on page four, you will see the beginning of fund 6150. That's where the enrichment courses are housed or live. The enrichment courses include all of the extracurricular like the basket weaving and the bread making and the yoga. That's where those classes get charged and expended to. Because we're running two different funds, we need to make sure that both funds have a revenue and expenditure that ties. So on the next page you will of the information that you provided, you will see revenues and they are sub totaled by fund 1500 and fund 6150. Do you want me to go over the changes to the adult ed budget or do you want to let Josh do that? Okay. The revenue looks fine. They are, it looks like negative numbers it being in the whole, but that is just how net revenue is recorded in my system. We'll go over the revenue a little bit later. The next document that you have in front of you is the program history of, it's actually the enrichment. So it starts back in 2013 and 14. The top half is revenue. So you can see in 2013 and 14, there were $72,573 in program revenue for enrichment alone. And on the bottom half, you will see that there were $54,000 in expenditures. I ran this through the current year. You will see that one of the years is marked as COVID. And you can very easily see that it's a COVID year because of the lack of enrichment revenue. The next document that you have in front of you is fund as a fund balance sheet. So like the district budget, adult ed has its own fund balance, which is actually comprised of the two funds that we're talking about. So fund 1500 has minus 67,000, which is just because we don't transfer from one fund to the other. The fund 6150 has 204,134 in it at the end of last fiscal year. So their audited fund balance is 136,000 and change. You will see that the commitment to this year's, meaning the current year's adult ed budget is 32,000 and change, leaving an available fund balance of 103,000. You will see that in the adult ed revenue, this budget is going to use approximately 42,000 and change to cover the revenue shortfalls. 13,671 fund 1500 and 29,000 and change in revenue. 6150 for a total revenue shortfall coming from fund balance of 42,000, leaving approximately 60,000 and change. The next document that you have in front of you, front and the backside, our net asset summary statements. It's basically where we started the year. Total revenues and total expenses to this point for fund 1500 on the front side and fund 6150 on the backside. You will see in both of these accounts that expenditures are running in excess of revenues. We expect that we will probably end the year in a revenue shortfall for both of these funds. And then whatever we may take them out of the remaining fund balance. The last document that you have in front of you is like the adult ed worksheet. It shows the budget compared to the current year. So you will see that this next year's budget is down 21,000 and change or 67,000. You will see the revenue that is also captured on the revenue sheets totaling 98,000. The net budget to be funded is 153,000. You will see that $48,273.83 is coming from this, from state subsidy. That's about an $8,000 reduction in state subsidy that we received this year. Below again, just like we see on our regular worksheet, the amount passed along to taxpayers. We are not recommending any increase to the local taxpayers. It's going to remain at 105,450, where it has remained for quite a few years. However, you will see on the bottom that Gardner, Pittston, and Randolph will actually have a small reduction, which will be then picked up by Wes Gardner. And again, that is due to the valuation percentages according to the state of Maine. So you see a 0% overall increase and a $0 overall increase. Questions about, I know I've just peppered you with a lot of information. Questions about the accounting portion of budget?
The 8,000 per town allocation from state subsidy, is that calculated the same?
So state subsidy is calculated based on expenditures in a previous year. So the more you spend, the more you get. So based on last year, we did not, and it's not just expenditures in our entire budget, but it's expenditures from the 1500 accounts, not the enrichment accounts.
Okay.
And different things were basically reimbursement schedule. Every third year. Couple of years ago, it could be, say, next year. And some things are reimbursed at 75%, some things at 50%.
So yeah, if you want to talk about the budget, if you could do it at the, the office.
Yeah, the couple of those, the pie for adult ed felt to be in the state. We get much bigger this last year. And we saw about an $8,000 decrease for here. Saw almost a $10,000 increase in the Winthrop subsidy, which is the program partner. The revenue that is listed on there is expected to offset our loss there. So there's 5,000 in there that has a partner. And that really is partly to support advisor, which has been a important position for both sites. The significant changes to the budget are reduction of the director position to three days a week. Right now it's four, with one day. So I have one day in Winthrop. So this would reduce it to three. You would see, and also an increase in the admin assistant position. And really that relates to the relates to the percentage of allocation that is done for enrichment and strictly academic, I guess, programming. And so there was a reduction for me because I'm all in, in the office of the director under those 1500 lines. But there is a slight increase to bring back some of the time from the full time to, to that, to the 1500 lines, to the academic.
So are you three days here and two days in?
No, just one.
Okay, so it's a reduction
Yep.
of one day a week total?
Yeah, so this only reflects the time here. Winthrop's budget reflects it one day. So.
And to dovetail on what Josh said, and I don't mean to interrupt you.
No, there's fun.
Where their salaries and their benefits are charged are supposed to be a function of what, what they do. So for here, the easiest thing I can think about is our food service workers. There are three job functions. There's breakfast, lunch, and à la carte. And their time sheets are actually broken down by the percentage of time they put in for each of those. So the same thing with adult ed. Josh said that his daytime secretary, administrative assistant rather, is spending 75% of her time on the instructional portion. So her salaries and benefits were moved 75% to fund 1500. The evening adult ed administrative assistant, she is completely, her salary and she doesn't get benefits are paid out of enrichment. That's basically what she's covering.
So those are the, I think, the major changes. There's been some cuts in professional development funds. As we anticipate, we still will receive state, state funding from the Maine College and Career Access Grant and the Adult Ed and Family Literacy Act. So those funds also will see if we do, if we end up underspending. Those funds are organized regionally. So if our, our hub spends under in those, those are typically redistributed, but that usually doesn't happen in the middle of summer. So, and they've been told that there would be carryover. So some of the professional development money has been removed out of here because I believe we will be facing a situation where that's accessible to the program in other means. So the other big piece is the shift in the catalog and printing and postage costs. And the benefit of working this last year with Winthrop is we have split those costs this last year. But they are more, far more expensive than pre-COVID. And so the model that's typical, the traditional model is to do two catalogs a year and mass, yeah, so close to around 50,000 households. Kind of centrally. Kind of looking at that, if, if every registration we received in our, one of our best years, even prior to COVID, came from a registration, from catalog, came directly from that, we're hitting about 3% of people by shipping that much, that many catalogs. So in a, I've been reading up on this in the advertising world, you know, four to six is great. So we're not like terrible off, but we're not in advertising. We're in education, so it seems like a lot of expense to put in that. So, so the plan that I have that we have put in place is to do, and this will sound a little strange, is actually to do three catalogs. But in a smaller printing size, there is possibility to do that locally too, as opposed to shipping out to a bigger, or mailing expenses. And the printing expenses kind of offset by doing a smaller printing, but doing it more, more often. Reinitiating a subscription to get a catalog. We have, pre-COVID, we did have that. So kind of making an effort already to inquire with that list that we had previously to see if they'd like to subscribe again. And so so make that effort, do the subscription and provide a catalog three times a year and have a, a different catalog showing up at local sites also at three times a year. So it increases the number of catalogs, but I think will reduce significantly the cost. And we may get back to a point where we need more catalogs. I think, you know, obviously I think we'd see, you know, the program would see that. But the, the doing so also kind of impacts the delivery of enrichment. So enrichment is bounced back a little after COVID and not really in the last two years. And so the, the goal is to set it back on track to increase our registration numbers and the activity for community education. So the three catalogs breaks up 36 or so weeks of potential time actually into just, into three kind of catalog terms. Each about 10 weeks long. It gives appropriate breaks at the beginning of the year, mid-year for kind of focus on, you know, September is hugely busy in terms of the number of students that come in for high school completion or otherwise. So it gives us a break in that. It starts at the end of September. It goes for 10, 10 weeks. And then we have two terms that would happen in the spring, starting in January, going to end of March and then April through June. So the, that, it does not change that someone can offer a class that starts at any time. It just simply sets up a, a pattern whereby if you want your class, if your class starts in this particular term, we are targeting that particular catalog. So we are not going to, so it also allows folks to kind of, accounts for the, when I say those 10 weeks, it accounts for the breaks that we have where we don't have classes. So there's still 10 weeks in that time, which most of them yeah, which the classes longest run. But they could run longer. So it's not eliminating that opportunity. It's simply putting them in. The other thing I think that is important about it is it, it you know, we look at what's most effective in terms of advertising. We're not putting out a catalog in January. We would not be putting out a catalog in January that would cover all the way to June. And so almost always things change and shift. We would not be doing that. So we would be, you know, it'd be 10 weeks long and then it'd be a new one coming out a month before, you know, for the next, so everything is about. So the catalog also gets closer to a four to five weeks prior to an, an educational opportunity. The social media that we have piloted this term for some of our classes, we have set up all of Facebook and most of Instagram. We still have some challenges with Instagram to do social media posting that hits four to five weeks prior to every class. So we're reducing the number of print catalogs. We do know people like those. We're still doing those. And then the idea would be to continue with a pretty robust setup for the social media. That's the significant change to how things have maybe happened. My goal is really to set the budget in place. If we do that, okay, collaborating with Winthrop on the catalog, they share the cost. They've split that this year. They would split it again next year. There's been some pain for Andrea doing that, that we're working on, trying to resolve. There's a transition coming with the software that we use to register people for class. So hopeful that we can code things in a way that we can solve that pain.
So the pain that Josh is talking about is all the revenue funding for all of the enrichment classes come through this office. And there's been a struggle with Winthrop, trying to figure out what they owe. So their revenue is still sitting in our budget that has yet to be distributed. So the revenue that you have in front of you is slightly inflated due to being unable to agree on the invoices sent to us from Winthrop that these are in fact correct to be paid. So that is, it's created a lot of work in my office. They've spent a lot of time trying to reconcile this. So that next, next year, we're hoping that we can keep the two revenue. While we operate, we say that we're Kennebec neighbors. We are not operating as one. We're operating as three. And it, it has been a real struggle us trying to maneuver, maneuver this.
Yeah, and I mean, I think we've been going along trying to straighten this out since October. So the good news and the kind of change of our court, our course registration program is it looks likely that there is a way to code classes to deposit in different accounts. So hopeful, there are several programs in the state that need that. Collaborate, so hoping we'll have more conversations about that in the in upcoming weeks.
So can we open it to see if board members have some questions?
Questions, and I have just probably some other things I can share.
I'm just noticing just the, we're talking about a couple of different things. One is that the, there's the credit recovery and those other classes that are different from the, that are for high school graduation that are different from the enrichment classes. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and that's included in, actually, where are the, where's that one included?
So if you're looking at high school completion, that is actually going to show up. Which page?
That's better.
Page three. Yeah. High school completion. There you go. That's gone down and that much of the funding for that is directly connected to the grants we have access to. So the MCCA grant, which we receive, helps to pay a large part of our advisor position.
Toni, can you ask your, I'm sorry, can you ask your question again?
Oh, it was just where the high school completion, struggling with like the phrasing, where that, what, what section that was under?
So, so they typically don't get revenue in for high school completion. The revenue comes from the state as well as
For that, yeah.
four towns, sorry?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
In any grants, they're not charged to participate in that part of the program.
That part, yeah. And then just noticing the other thing is that obviously the enrichment was down for, for this year, and then the, the trips have never really recovered from COVID as such.
No, and you know, I, I will say I have been best steward this year for my own personal reasons. And it was, as we established in that, we did attempt a trip beginning of the year. We charged $150 for the family. Wish back about that being really expensive. And transportation costs, as you probably were, are not cheaper than they used to be. So we were really trying to sweep that one in pretty cheaply and didn't work. So, and then I'm not, there is a balance we've been there to, in terms of revenue and expense to attempt to do some trips. We, next year, we have put out proposals, all proposals for classes. We've been, we're already starting to plan for next year. One of those is to, so folks who do
I also want to mention that one of the reasons that this budget relies heavily on the use of fund balance is an email that we received from RSU2. Do you want to discuss that?
Yeah, I think we mentioned it last meeting, correct?
We're not sure. I sent some information actually to RSU2 today that was requested. And their finance meeting, the third day of this budget, does not rely on their, the community contribution to
So we've previously been with RSU2 and Winthrop Gardner. And this budget is proposed to the Winthrop and Gardner.
So yes, we've been together just a couple of years. It really hasn't been that, that long. And so RSU2 was responsible for Um, and so RSU Two, uh, was responsible for, they have agreed, uh, to contribute thirty-five thousand dollars that would support participation in our academic program for their residents. Um, and so they're at a place where they're probably not comfortable in providing those funds any, any longer, not sure that they have enough people participating. Um, so they're looking at reducing that. The Winthrop, um, there are a few things that are shared, but we really are still running separately. The initial idea of Kennebec neighbors was to merge us all together. Um, that was the philosophy behind it, but it really hasn't come to fruition in the way we have envisioned it. Could it still in the future? Possibly, but we're not there right now. So in a sense, it's kind of easier to stop funding something right now because we can always add it back later. And that's kind of how I am choosing to look at it.
Um, uh, you know, the benefits that we get out of, um, sharing an advisor, primarily with Winthrop, and the benefits in doing the catalog together are still there. Um, uh, trying to be able to overcome some hurdles that are, I mean, so. So, uh, you know, if we're not with RSU Two, that is, uh, right.
Perfect. Excellent. Anybody have any questions for Josh?
The, the, um, the academic part of this, and you seeing a, a, the trend of more or less headcount?
So I, uh, I could pull up the master list. I was looking at it earlier today. So we started this year doing a master list of all the students that come in. Um, and the difficult part is that, uh, it's rolling. So, um, someone could walk in tomorrow, uh, and add to that number. Um, but, uh, we are, um, in both sites, both Winthrop and in Gardner, have more, uh, people who've, uh, come in, uh, this year right now than we did all of last year. So we're at eight, we were in the, uh, I think by the end of the year, and it's always hard because, again, like we get people right up even up to the end of the year who want to start, get going. But we, we have eighty-seven on our master list of people who've walked through the door and started the intake process with us. Um, uh, I would probably say about fifty, fifty-ish, fifty-five have finished. Um, I would say that's, uh, around twenty over where we'd be at this point last year. Um, Winthrop is usually around ten students kind of active. They're at about seventeen. Um, we have nine, uh, from this district. We have nine sixteen to twenty-year-olds, um, who are, uh, so they are school age, who have either have dropped out for a variety of reasons, need a different approach.
Do you see the trend up and down?
I feel like that trend in the high school completion is, is, is up. Um, I, I'm not sure I know where it continues to go. You know, we, um, have probably, we're on a fifty to sixty mark, if not we're.
Generally, speaking, when they, do most of them complete when they come into this?
Yeah, another thing that's hard to calculate, I have students who have finished, um, the student finished two years ago, was starting six years prior. Um.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it, it seems that even having attended a graduation, there are a lot of people that start and may have completed a portion of it, and then life gets in the way, and they have to pull back, and then they come back when they're ready, and so it can, it go up and down.
It's a difficult, um, exercise in tracking, um. The, um, yeah, after six years, I'm not sure I've gotten a great handle on, um. Uh. We, I could say this, there, there's one measure we, uh, that the state uses, called measurable skill gain. We have to assess our students, um, during what's called a period of participation, and, uh, determine if they have made a measurable skill gain. One of the ways that they can do that is they can, we take a general assessment, and if you score a level higher, it's pretty straightforward. The other way you can do that is by passing, uh, a test. Uh, uh, so one of the high set tests, maybe not, there's five of them, so pass one.
This is generally, you're saying, most people that start, they try to.
Yeah, most people that start are, right, and we get them back at, they'll leave, we'll leave them for a year, but they come back. Um, and I think the idea is to keep the door open and not, and to have some accountability, but not so much pressure that they're not willing to come back when, when they have some time.
How many are you graduating this year, Josh?
So I have, this year, I have, uh, we have four graduates right now. Um, uh, one, actually five, one just finished at Winthrop.
And.
Here, we have four.
Yep.
Um, we have four students at the, uh, with one more test.
And how many did we graduate last year?
I think we had, well, between the two programs, um, we have eleven.
Between us and Gar, uh, us and Winthrop?
Not all, yeah, not all of them faded in.
In the graduation.
In graduation, yes. So, which is another note, just graduation, if you are interested, we're, we're planning for the seventeenth of June, five o'clock at Main Street. Depending upon the numbers, we'll give you, we'll give you what that looks like. Um, and we do invite the, um, Maine State diploma students to attend that. Because they're not.
I will say, in adult ed, Jeff, those students really want to be there. I mean, it's, it's like, when the graduation happens, they come dressed and they, families come, big people, little people. But, I mean, it's just, they want to be there. So when it comes to finishing, I can't tell you how long it takes them to finish, but, but they're so excited when they finish. And it's just such a great, a great gathering, and they might be forty-five years old. You've had some, a senior citizen.
Most of their sixties.
Yeah, so it, it's.
They just came back, actually. We were there for Tammy a couple of years ago.
Yes.
She's now back with us to take a, um, under the, uh, College and Career Access Program, to take a college class.
And it.
Um, in that program.
Nice. So it kind of takes the pressure off to do it that way, which is, it's, it's really great, so.
What time is that on, on June seventeenth, sorry?
Five, uh, five, so, we typically have had, uh, a dinner and then a ceremony. And, uh, depending upon our population of students, I think we take good consideration of whether, what we will do. Just, um, we, it's, in my time, we've had students who didn't want to go because they don't want to be a center of attention for very long. Then we have some who really can show up, and then they have, we have to be like, okay, we're having dinner, yes, but the other thirty-five people you want to come have to come just for the ceremony. So, I mean, it's a good, it's something to look forward to.
Yes.
What we do. Have.
Thank you very much for that, Josh. That's been great.
Did I miss anything about your question or other?
I think so.
You missed my question, thank you.
It's become my favorite. I really just love going to that. So thank you, Josh, for continuing to do that. And if there's no more questions, um, I guess, need a motion.
We need a, a motion to approve the budget as it's been presented.
Yep.
We'll make a motion to approve.
I second the motion.
You'll second, Jeff. Great, thank you. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor? Motion carries. Josh, thank you.
The only thing, um, that I have to add is, um, typically, we have a board vote before we start a week before vacation on the adult ed budget. Um, I am going to proceed preparing the documents for the budget newsletter and for the assessment. So even though, um, this still needs to go to the budget, I am hoping that it will not change and that the numbers that I present at the board typically adult ed does not change, doesn't, does not change. But I am just letting you know that I am proceeding, reaching out, um, to our attorney for preparation of the warrants and that we have to, the time crunch is the, the budget newsletter. We need somebody to pull it together. We need, needs to go to the printers. It needs to come back. So that's what the big driving forces. So we are marching on, and I just want you to be aware that, um, we are marching on even though it hasn't formally been approved.
Fine. I sent an email to board members today to let them know that we would not have a special meeting this week. So I'm sorry, I should have copied you on that.
Nope, you are fine. You are fine.
All right, then. That's all.
Mm-hmm.
Great. We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, Josh. Yes, thank you. Have a good evening.